I'd like to call this meeting to order, this special call, City Council meeting to order on this, whatever, today, January 29th at 6:12 PM. Mr. Derry, would you call the road, please?
Yes, I see Reverend.
Here.
Tom Baker.
Here.
Tom Powell's accident. Jim's period of accident, Lance's period.
Here.
There's a court, and not change, not prison.
Thank you. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and it is the adoption of the 2020 City of Greenwood budget. And I would allow Mr. Tom to be here. I'm not allowing him. He is there to answer questions. And do you want to just go through it and ask questions? How do you guys want to do this?
I entertain a motion, not to be passed. But I make that my...
I entertain an unofficial motion. You all want to see it on PowerPoint?
Yeah.
No, it's not a "you want to see." Actually, these are the numbers. This is the state of the city.
What is what you want to see?
So you need to see this. So I'm going to insist on it. However, you have in front of you the entire budget. There is a correction to the general budget. Last minute correction. I have the new numbers in my presentation. But your budget's expensed by $15,000 for some building and maintenance routine contracts that were not in the budget that were caught by Danielle. We put them in just... It does not make a material change to the budget as you really see. The other thing that you have in front of you is the presentation or some of the presentations you need to do.
I need a beer. Well, we can't buy that green one.
Just read it. I'll read the other question.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Do you have the Apple presentation in front of you that I'm going to be doing on the screen so you can write notes if you want? It's listed as the comparative statistical analysis. Do you want one? Is that what you're...
No, no, I'm choking.
I heard Lance both.
Sorry.
Sturgis, would you address that?
But...
Is this a radio?
Not a porn.
Yeah, there's a porn.
One's in the red.
We do know with the...
No.
I have a porn.
You want them to hear it?
I want them to hear it because I don't want to repeat it.
Did you hear the one about the cheeseburger pizza and the cows on it?
No.
What you're going to see, guys, is the state of the city.
Oh, oh.
Okay. It's not the state of the city's speech, but it's the financial position.
It's the actual state of the city. Tom, you should say that in a way I think it's bad.
No, no, it sounded ominous.
Um, well, because lots of... Guys never hit times. All right, he's back.
No, you didn't wait until things...
Yeah, we did. All right.
The mayor insists on it.
All right, I'm going to go through this, and then you can take all the knowledge that you're going to see in this presentation to the budget that you have in front of you and make your decisions as to what you want to do after you see this. So the first thing I want to show you is the revenues. And I'm not sure if these slides right here, it'd be better if the overheads were off for you guys or not, because you don't have this in front of you. You do need me to look at your paper or behind you, because I am going to be highlighting some areas. The amended budget that you have here for 2019, after you had increased some of the areas of revenue streams that you had, was $9,008. We ended up, these are just from the operating departments, not the department's tax we get revenue from that's not considered an operating department. Before the operating departments, we came in at $9,885 or .61% of a percent, $5,000 off our revenue projection. So the revenue projections were deep darned close to what we actually get. So 9.8 million is what we actually brought in in revenues for the operating departments. 9.89 is the amount that we budgeted. So that was a kind of like a dead-on, if you will, as far as the revenue is concerned. So we're proposing in the 2020 budget, revenues for the operating departments of $10,390. $10,390, which initially looks like a 5.05% growth in revenue. And everybody is like, "Oh, that's great. We got revenue growth. That's what you're wanting." The question is, do you really? Primarily because of this note number one, which follows right here, this $549,000 on the line sewer department. The only reason that you have growth is because Sewer is projecting a rate increase which flows in through the budget, which is generating or going to be generating a net amount of about, the whole reason you have a variance here, is $549,000 coming directly from their rate increase for Sewer. You take that rate increase out, and you have a decrease in your revenue, not an increase. And that revenue stays solely with the sewer department, Water Sewer Department, for their profitability. Does not flow back, pardon the pun, back into the city.
Go back flows.
Go back flows into the city general funds. So while that looks like a good number, and it is something that is needed for obvious reasons, you have to consider that when you're looking at the growth. It's pretty much zero growth right now as far as revenue is concerned for the operating departments, other than the for-profit side of the water systems revenue. So any questions on the revenue side? All right, we'll go to expense. The adopted and amended budget for our expenses was $12,425. The actual expenses for the operating departments came in at $8.8 million. And that is a $3.5 million miss on your budget. And everybody goes, "Well, that's great. You didn't spend all that money. You saved. You were frugal. Or you promised you were spending something because most of that $12 million was a result of capital expenditures. That did not materialize." And I will show you that in a little bit. But that's where that variance comes from. Majority of the variance comes right from capital expenditures. The proposed 2020 budget is $11,962. So if you compare the $11 million to the $12 million that you had last year, you're actually decreasing your expenses by 3.72%. Now, the other you have is a budget variance from actual, which is $11 million to the actual $8 million. You're increasing your expenses by over $3 million, which is a 34% increase in your expenses. You take out the 2019 carryover capital expense that's now in the 2020 budget, and you're ending up with a $2 million removal of that tree because that's what's impacting the $3 million. You end up with a $1 million expense growth or an 11% growth. I can tell you that there's $1.5 million in new capital expenditures. That's the carryover of old capital expenditures that was not spent and is destined to be spent in 2020, or at least budgeted that way. And $1.5 million in new capital spending, which is this $3 million number. So if I take the $1.5 million out of this, you're back down to the number that is favorable, which is the operations is actually not increasing expenses over the 2020. Actually, operations is experiencing an expense decrease. It's all being driven, that massive increase right there, is all being driven by the capital. Sorry. Just in case you wanted to know. And that's a positive, because that means your operations side isn't going hog wild in spending when your revenue's flat. Okay, now we go to the next one to show you how we balanced the budget over the last three years and how we've prepared to balance the budget in the 2020 year. Back in 2017, we had expenses of $9,700 for the operating departments. We actually had revenue stream of $9,001. So we had to pump a half a million, $582,000, in to bring the revenue line up to the expense line and balance the budget. Half a million dollars, not too bad when you're on a $10 million budget. You are going to have to dip into your funds sometimes. You don't hoard all, you know, everything. But you would expect there would be some years where you would have a balanced budget where you could actually put in the money into your funds. So in 2018, same thing happened. We had a $9.9 million budget. We had a $9.4 million revenue stream, so we had to put $511,000 from our funds to bolster the revenue side in order to be able to balance the budget. In 2019, there was an anomaly happened, and there was this thing called the road project. And the road project generated some angst and concern about whether there was hoarding money in the Water Sewer Department. And Water Sewer decided to go ahead and start committing and start growing and start doing some projects, and they committed several million dollars worth of capital projects on the budget or in the budget. So the budget went from a $9 million budget to a $12.4 million budget. So that means that with a revenue stream of only $9,800, we had to pump in $2,505 from funds, primarily from city sales and use tax funds that have been accumulating over time, and primarily from the Water Sewer Department for projects they were committing to. So that committed money balanced the budget as it was being taken out of the fund, or at least it was promised to take out of the fund. In 2020, we have, if anybody asks, what's the, what is your budget for the City of Greenwood? It's $11.9 million, or right under $12. We've got slightly south of a $12 million budget. We have $10.3 million in projected revenue. So in order to balance the budget, $1.5 million, which, by the way, as I just disclosed a little bit earlier, and you'll see it in another slide, that is the new capital spending right there. So the new capital spending is what's driving the fund depletion in order to make those expenditures match the revenue stream. So this is what we're bringing in in the month, in the year, rather. This is what we're having to take out of our funds in order to make our expenses be met for 2019. Everybody got it? Now we're into the fund itself. What you saw before was the revenues and the expenses. Now you're looking at what we have in the bank. This is the all-in city fund right now. As of the end of 2019, the general fund, which is broken down into two categories, unrestricted and restricted, had a balance of $2.5 million all-in. Then you have the water, the sewer, the street, the city sales and use tax, water systems, water sewer restricted amounts, which basically is part of the water and sewer monies. It's just the capital side. Water systems revenue fund, the A and P tax revenue, and the payroll banking cap. All those funds had a dollar amount of $10,840,000 in our budget. That's what we said we would end with. So remember back on this slide, the $10 million, oh, that's the revenue side. Revenue side we had, right there. Oh, that's... That's expense. There we go, the $10 million that we have right here. That's the dollar amount that we're anticipating come over in our fund. So $10,309 is what we're budgeting in each of these departments. Well, as you can see, we said we would hit $10,840,000, but we brought in $11 million or not brought in. We actually have in our bank account $11,815 in all funds. So we've actually increased our fund balance by $1.7 million. $1.7 million increase. The key to this chart or this illustration here are these three lines down here. The budgeted 2018 fund growth or decline was budgeted to be a 4% decline. We budgeted in 2019 to decline our fund balance by almost 9%, 8.9. And then in 2020, we're budgeting right now to deplete or decline or decrease our fund balance by 12.74%. That is assuming that you spend every dollar that you have identified in your budget right now exists. So here's what you really did. In 2018, you said a 4% decline, and you increased your fund. This is what we budgeted. This is what we did. We actually increased our fund by $1.5 million that year. So it's 16.25% growth when we said we would have a 4% decline. So that's a 20% swing. In 2019, we said we would have a 9% decline. We ended up with a 17% increase in our fund balance, our growth. So do I have any faith that we're going to spend everything that's in the budget and we're going to hit this 12.7, which, by the way, the last two years, my revenue projections were under 1% from being off the variance? So if my revenue projection is pretty solid, it's going to, you're going to be making up a growth or a lesser of a decline by your expense side. Not spending, canceling projects that you said you would do, abandoning them, coming in, maybe doing better deals and getting lower cost on certain things that were budgeted higher. A lot of reasons why you miss your expense like that. But the fact that you budgeted this and came in at this tells a story. And a part of that story could be how well you do your budgets. How realistic are they? Because you're missing it, and you're committing monies that even in an investment side, we can't use because you're committing it. All right. And that's, that's your way. Now I want to get into the capital expenditures, and this is where actually I've been talking about for the last few slides. The capital expenditure is budgeted for 2019, and the capital improvements for 2019 total $4,404. That's what we budgeted. We actually came in at 1.5. So the variance, the capital spending variance was $2.9 million that you did not do. And you can see where the variances were. So when you're looking at a, you're looking at a 1.5% spend, everybody said a $1.5 million spend. Everybody said, well, I heard a couple people mention, why are we hearing about it just now? You actually hear about this starting in about June or July, when I start giving you the financials. I always draw the city council's attention to the capital outlay line on the financials. And I say, "We are budgeting $4.4 million." And the reason we are in a $600,000 surplus right now in our funds, adding to our funds growth, is because we've only spent a $4.4 million and $700,000 in our capital, and it's half the year is over. I was saying that, go back to the tape over and over and over again. So you know, you've been knowing all along that that is what was going to happen. And it happened. So how much of this is carried over? I went and tabulated everything that was in the budget that's carried over to 2018. $2.42,000, or $2.42,000, $2,42,000, is being carried over of that number. That tells me that there are projects that were abandoned, that are not going to be done, and/or projects that came in well under what was budgeted. Okay? And I can tell you right now, Parks is a large portion of this $2.9 million. There's $400,000 that was in that budget of 4.4 for the Arkansas Community Foundation for a grant that was supposed to be used to do trails. They've abandoned that because of all of what's going on with the road project right now. So there's an unknown there. So they pulled away from that project and didn't go after the money and didn't expend any money either. So I can tell you $400,000 of that $900,000 variance comes directly from Parks. The rest of it comes from a variety of different departments due to a combination of abandoning a project or bids were coming in lower than anticipated or various other reasons. Parks had some additional of those two. All right, so to get back down to it, this year's budget, we have budgeted $3.5 million, a little less aggressive than we were in previous years. Of that $3.5 million, $2 million is the carryover. So what that tells you is that we're budgeting new capital spending in 2020 of 1.5 million. That's a good thing. That's something you should tout, especially because it's going to be doing things that hopefully will enhance the services of the city to the citizens and/or the amenities to the citizens of Greenwood. I'll promote that. One of the things I also look at is how, what is that percentage to our total expenditure? As you see, in 2019, our capital outlay was 36.7% of our expenses. This year, it's 30% of our expenses. It was 45% of our revenue, of the revenue that was brought in. If you wanted to say how much of that money is being used potentially for possibility for capital expenditures, it was 45%. This year, it's 34%. Now, we all know that that's not happening because in order to balance the budget, we're pulling from our funds balance. But the key is how much of the expense that we're incurring is through capital. So one-third of our monies that are being spent in the city technically are going towards capital expenditures, improvements and/or assets. That's not a bad thing. That's a good thing, especially if these assets need to be replaced and you're not using old technologies and old equipment and/or you're doing something that, like I said, would improve the amenities of the citizens. Budgeted compensation, one of the last big items that is in the budget, shows you a history of where the compensation is going for the major operating departments of the city, actually, the all the operating departments. And you will see that in 2018, we increased compensation by 3.78%. Budgeted in 19, we actually budgeted an increase of 4.1%. And in 2020, our current budget for compensation increase is 2%. You also see out here on the side which departments are impacting that and to what direction they're impacting that. Water's down 2%, Parks down 1%, you have Administration up 18%. And that does not include the city council member compensation, which is looked under a different account, not through sellers. Okay? Any questions on, we've got some good news, too, by the way, just so you know. This is not in your package, so you'll have to look up at the screen. Back in 2019, we had $461,000 in revenues over expenditures on the general fund. The general fund has departments under it. Parks, planning, fire, police, animal control are all under the general fund, along with general and admin. The $460,000 roughly equates to our franchise taxes. So general and admin normally spends all of their income that's attributable to the expenses that generates through general. And they reserve the amount of franchise taxes to cover the deficit spend of its other departments based on spending more than the allocated or the revenue streams that flow with those departments. So this year, we are looking at $313,000. Your number's different in the budget that I handed you only because we took a correction. $313,000 means that we are going to take our total unrestricted general fund balance to 1.2, less $400,000, the estimated revenue over expense of, that's not, that should have been, that is right, $879,000. Because that's all departments. This is general departments. If you add it up, and I'll show it to you on the next slide, we are saying we're going to take our general unrestricted fund below $1 million.
And that's really not a good place to be.
Do I think you'll actually end up with that number? No, just based on the clues you've been having. And there was an unknown in there, such as the city sales and use tax and the county sales tax and where that's headed, and I will show you that in a second.
Well, we've always said we wanted to budget that. We wanted the budget to have a million dollars.
You get below $1 million, I start, and if we start actually hitting that below $1 million, I start getting a little antsy. Because you have no contingency fund. If you had a contingency fund, I'd feel a little less angst. And we're working on that through the investment committee. Now, the next slide shows you how that breaks down. And this is in your general budget, but it's the second page of your, it's page three and four, three, page three at ten. Yeah. What you're going to see is the breakout by department. The general fund unrestricted checking account is 1.2 million. That's what we're saying it's going to be. And then we're going to take out the, we're going to add in the surplus for general, add in the surplus for Parks, add in the surplus for planning, and take out the deficits for fire, police, and animal control. When you do, that's what brings you down to the $879,000. This is the restricted, these are monies that flow through the general fund that are restricted purpose, so they're not to be used just for anything the general wants to use them for. They have to go to these items that are controlled by those commissions and/or by the stated purpose for what the fund gets, like admin or justice or economic development. And the very next page gives you a history of the last three years. This is 2017. We budgeted a depletion of our unrestricted general fund by a quarter of a million. Last year, we budgeted an unrestricted depletion of almost a quarter of a million, $229,000. And this year, we're doing the very same thing. The problem here, though, is that the restricted general fund is looking to be depleted as well, so we're tapping into some of the restrictions, obviously, for various reasons. One of the things we tapped into already this year was the city sales and use tax for the purchase of the land for Parks, which is in there. So that took them down significantly, the city sales and use tax, significantly $100,000, $111,000. So that's your trend. Now, you're not hitting it, as you know, because of the reasons I've already explained. Now, when you look at, a lot of people will tend to look at the line for police, and they'll say, $686,000. That's a significant subsidy there, if you want to look at it that way. General subsidizes the police department because of their revenue and expenses. But let's look at it over time. That's what this is. This is going from 2007 to 2020, showing the expenses the police department has budgeted. That's the budgeted. Now, they tend to come in a little bit under that all the time, so this line's actually a little lower. As you saw earlier, you can see that they were under budget last year in expenses. But a lot goes into that, which is hiring and firing of police officers and other things that didn't materialize as far as their personnel is concerned. This is the budgeted revenue, and you'll notice it goes along the same kind of path. The revenue is increasing with the expenses. And this revenue is the revenue that is attributable to the police department solely for what's expenses that revenue is to offset. This revenue does include county sales tax. That's what that CST stands for. So the county sales tax that is apportioned to them at 50% is also included in this, along with their fines and fees from the, from tickets and the fingerprinting and the accident reports and the reimbursement they get for the SROs and reimbursement they get from the grant for the DEA. All that is their revenues to match their expenses. So you can kind of see that if this revenue stream was flat, but these expenses were going up, now we should be talking. But that's not what's happening. The revenue stream and the expense stream are going up, sometimes a little bit more than you'd want in the expense. And I'll tell you, one of the reasons why this went up a little high is $30,000 right now for an interlocal agreement for the non-emergency 911. That is budgeted in your budget, but it's not something that's set in stone yet, but we had to put a placeholder in there. So we know it. General's covering it, but they're covering it in the subsidy. So let's look at the subsidy. This is the actual subsidy. And this red line right here is the, you can plot this on your graphs, that is the trend line. And the trend of the subsidy over this same period... And the trend of the subsidy over this same period of time is going down, not going up. The numbers look big, but the overall cost of that, operating that department is going up, but revenue's going up with it that they control. So I wanted to give you the whole picture and not just a micro shot of just the dollar amount and everybody gasps. This is the county sales tax. And the only, there we go. The only thing I wanted to bring into focus here would be this, this is your distribution. All right. This is the amount that we have as distributable. Because you know when the revenue comes in, you take 51,000 off the top and give it to the boys club, 40,000 goes to the lot fee as a, helped defray the cost of the lot fee. Then you have 1.69 million dollars to distribute to these departments in these percentages. So when you have a, an amount that's sitting there for planning, for instance, one of the things you have to look at is there's $12,000 planning is adding back to the general fund. But if, if we think that planning's revenue projection is realistic, that's difficult because you have permits and they're hard to predict. You could lower the percentage for planning of 6.9.
SRCA come out of county?
SRCA does not. SRCA comes out of your minds. You could do it, but you're not. At least not according to your city council. But you could lower this 6.9% to the, to the tune of $12,000 and redistribute it somewhere. I would not recommend you necessarily redistribute it to a department under general because you're not doing anything to the fund balance, you're just moving it to make one department look pretty. But there's a little thing here called sidewalks. And they have no revenue stream. So you could decide that you want to give them some so they can start building money into the revenue stream for sidewalks. I'm not recommending you do it, I'm just saying. That's how you look at this every time you get a budget and you say, okay, what can we do to that? In order to take into consideration some of these surpluses to bring them down to a zero balance budget. Okay?
Does a sidewalk, does it get a little revenue?
100 bucks, $50, they bring in $10,000 a year. That is the only revenue they get. Not enough to build sidewalks.
Does a painted loom, if we were doing it, go in there?
If we were to do it, it would go in there. We had it.
So those are the two forms.
Yes, I'm just giving you an option where, you know, we were talking about who needs some more money as far as that goes. Recycles under general, they did nothing but a little bit of revenue from sale of cans. Most of the tank of bottles, South Sebastian solid waste. But we couldn't, we could talk about that and there's nothing stopping you from saying we need animal control to maybe housing, when you talk about housing fees going up and you have to go back and hit up the council for some more money in the budget, you could be apportioning some more of that county sales tax, just a thought. Okay. Now, I want to drop in the lot fee, just to give you an idea what lot fee costs are. So the police department for 2020 is going to contribute out of their budget. It's already in your budget, 127.7. That's not what the total lot fee cost is, but that is what your portion of it out of your operating budget is. Fires 21,000, animal controls 39.10. This 40,000 is the apportioned amount that comes from the county sales tax. So you're bringing in revenues of 193 to offset the lot fee expense, which is 193.5410. That's what we try to do. Now, all the calculations are right there. We do have a premium tax credit. The total contribution of the lot fee for the city would be 269,000. That's what the retirement program for police and fire runs and animal control that gets certified on. The premium tax credit right now is running about 66, so 68 and, you know, seventy something thousand dollars comes to us. And then the county sales tax of 40,000, that brings you down to 153. And then we break it out by the different departments to come up with dollar amount balance. That's how lot fees come off.
Now, what is the premium tax credit again?
That's where the state is paying back credit to us to help us when they radically forced a major change in the dollar amount of contributions. The state has a pool of money that they apportion out to the cities. That is not guaranteed and that money will at one point go away. So when it does, it's going to be a huge hit to the city. All right. City sales and use tax for January, we got our numbers in. 213,000 city sales and use tax, 9.1% over previous year, January. That is unprecedented, huge, never before happened, that great. County sales tax, remember this is for like October and November's collections. We don't even have December yet, that's, February is normally our highest month. So change in prior year for county sales tax is 4.3% positive growth. I would love to think that we're going to keep a rather larger than 3% growth for the year because if you do, it's going to dramatically impact the revenue stream, which will impact our deficits. Including police in the county side because they get county sales taxes. So 2.5% is basically coming to them because they get 50%. So just to show you on the graph what that would look like, there's your 2021 first month's elections that we received compared to all other previous 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 years.
Where do you know it's at?
Right up there. And then, look, and that's your county, again, higher than ever. You can see this is all the monies that were collected in January for the previous year's 14, oh wait, 20. It's the highest amount we've ever received.
And Tom, when we see the effect of the census, is that in?
I would think that 21.
Sometime in 21, I mean, what would be in time for the budgeting of 21?
I mean, does February reflect probably December?
Yes.
So February is the largest because it reflects December.
Correct. Probably the end of November, fall. They're about two, you're about a two-month lag.
So any of that would be very low, either the front lines or possibly right?
That could very easily be. We don't know yet. And caution, one month does not a trend man. Okay? But that's very good numbers. Lastly, that I, what I wanted to point out to you is what's going on with the water sewer over the last 16, 17 and 18 years? As far as the sale of water and the sale of sewer service. You don't sell sewer, you sell the service, the sewer of the processing, it's just a play on words. It's like, yeah, you want some sewer, we got something to sell. The water, the water revenue ended for 12, 31, 19 at a million five, 762,000 for the sewer revenues. That's all in, that's with your water taps and your sewer taps and everything, not just sale of water. You compare that to the same period 16, 17 and 18. When you looked at the amount that we collected for water revenues in 19 compared to 16, year over year, we had a decline in 16, water sewer combined. We had a, that's pretty negligible. So we basically had a decline in 17 and a 3.84, 3.84% decline in revenue for 19. So we've had a three-year trend of revenue decline in the water sewer department. So there's a lot of reasons for that. We initially thought, well, the anomaly. First, I want to point out that this line right here in water, that's where we started the year, that's 2019. And that's where we ended the year, 2019. There's the sewer 2019, there's the sewer 2019. Below our last four years or three years. Now, in the last commission meeting, John pointed out that there was, a lot of people are getting these low flow, they're conserving water. Yes, we had a very wet year and that does impact water sales. But you should be considering, when you start seeing revenue streams dropping, you should be considering your expense stream. You got to look at ways to cut back on costs without necessarily cutting back on services as well as modest increases in rates. And as we know, water is still profitable, even though there's a negative number there. They're not selling as much. Sewer is where the issue was and they're taking steps to address that.
Just given that, you know, are we saying that, when we're looking at it, are we saying that only 50% of your water is going back into your, you know, your sewer system?
I think that would be a good question to drive through.
That varies. During droughts, we'll have many less come to the sewer plant than what we sold. During wet periods like August of this year, we could have maybe as much as three times coming to sewer plants what we sold on days. Two, maybe more, plus twice. And what you buy, a lot of it does not go back in, but we take it, we get some from the groundwater that's wet. It makes unfortunately up for that. We don't get paid for that.
And that's pretty much all I had in the actual presentations. I just wanted you to know that the budget right now as it stands for 2020 is an 11.9 million dollar budget.
All the percentages from the county sales tax. If we do start seeing a trend and stuff, is that something that, you know, we can adjust the percentages in the middle of the year or anytime during the year?
Of course, I know you can, that's your purview, you can adjust them anytime. These right here is what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Yes, you can, that's, that's totally up to you to be able to reallocate. You control that. And just remember that anything you put on the lineup here, if you were to look at possibly the South Sebastian County Retirement Center for the senior center and you want to relieve some of the burden on the general fund by allowing the county sales tax to kind of subsidize or pay for some of that service, that will deplete this and take away the revenue stream for those below that you're actually distributing the money to. And that's, that's the numbers that you're seeing in the budget today. Any questions?
Tom, when I look at all this, there's two things in all of this that sort of make me uneasy, I guess. The two things, I mean, when I look at this council is what, what we can control. All of these things like office supplies and insurance and all that. I trust the administration is doing their very best to manage what all those are. That's not really, you know, for us. I think the two things that, that we probably as a council can manage, if that's the right word for that, are salaries and capital expenditures, which are roughly a third of the budget, right?
Two-thirds of the budget.
Each, yeah, each are about a third of this budget. So when you start talking about depleting the general fund and all of those kind of things, you know, there's some, there's some pretty big pay raises in here this year. And I, I don't have a problem with, you know, somebody's job changing, their job duties changing and their salary changing. I mean, I think that's totally appropriate to do. One, one thing that, that does sort of bug me frankly is the, the trend over the years that you had a COLA, cost of living adjustment that seems to have turned into a merit adjustment. You know, the GDP growth last year was 2.1%. You know, in, in business, in all the business I've ever been in, it's in, which is not fair, it's not a, a popular opinion, I'm sure. Is, you know, you're hired to do a job, you're given a job description for that job and if you do that job, you keep the job. And there's cost of living adjustments along the way that would bring these salaries along as the economy changes. And then certainly, like I say, if your job description changes, well, it should change with it. But, you know, those are the two big numbers in here that, that I think could need a deeper dive, in my opinion. I mean, I, I, you know, to Tom's point that he has made repeatedly. And I said to Tom the other day, I'd like to see us do a quarterly review of capital expenditures, these capital projects that are out there. We really, you know, we really sit down and get with the department's head, department heads or whoever and say, you know, what, where are you at, what's going on, is that going to happen, is it not going to happen? We need to take this out of the budget in March and know that, you know, if it's something that's not going to come to fruition, you know, that, I think that'd probably be good for, for us to look at and think about, you know, quarterly, maybe a mid-year review, I don't know. I don't know how often you need to do that, but, but it's kind of, it's not that we look up at the end of the year and go, oh gee. You know, because to Tom's point, he says that to us every month. But I don't think that we really take a deep dive as a council with the mayor and the department heads, you know, really sit down and say, hey Dennis, are you going to do that or not? You know, water department, what's going on and is that really going to happen? You know, maybe the mayor, maybe you do that, probably more than we do, I suppose. But I, I'd like to see us as a council, take a deeper dive and look at these, at the salaries and the capital expenditures in this budget.
We should have done that before now.
Yeah.
Not at 11:59.
It's, it's, it's hard to do, I mean, you know, I did, but I mean, I see, there was a, I saw one salary in here that's over what we showed the maximum on this, on this resolution we have for pay scales.
And I keep thinking so that I disagree. I think what I see is there's a lot of inconsistencies in regard to merit and citizen jets. We've got some people that are 3%, some are 2%, some are 9.6%. And so they're not a standard step, they're not, I guess, not a standard. That's right. I mean, what dictates a 7.65% merit increase? I mean, that's, to me, there's no.
Well, if it says between that scale range, there's one that's, it shouldn't be any higher than that pay scale. I mean, no matter what, whether they want it or not. That's the ordinance and to the adjustment, it's the department head discretion. We had this discussion the other night, I mean, we can beat it up again. But we got to get this budget passed. And right now is not time to go back through your department and figure out what we're going to do on pay raises and this and that. It's their discretion, department heads to give those raises. Some of them I don't agree with, 110%. But we should hammer that out way before now.
Well, I, I agree, I, there's some I don't agree with, maybe. But we all agreed that if you, if the mayor and the department heads set a salary inside this, this pay range, okay, but, but if you go 6% or 9% year after year, well, how many are going to top out? We're going to top them out and then say, we need to re-review this or what do we do now? And so, you know, we leave them topped out and say, sorry, everybody, that's all you got?
And I mean, that's really where the COLA comes in.
And I mean, that's really where the COLA comes in, because COLA will ship all ranges, you know, up. The, but, to me, I, I, whether a person gets a COLA raise or a merit raise, it's, to me, it's, it's still, it's still a raise. And it's a, it's a compounded effect, you know, but I, I agree, I think it's something, you know, needs to be looked at. But also, it's kind of a trade disorder, wanna give the department heads, you know, their, their kind of a leeway, you know, I mean, because they know their employees and who needs to get what.
Maybe we need to have a better budget session next year, you know what I'm saying? If that's what you wanna do. But I mean, like I say, I mean, we're...
The only thing that I was gonna say, I just, you know, like, I like all these things here that have been presented, but I guess on page five of your handout, Tom, you're looking at, you know, how much do you think that we can, as a city, reasonably invest?
What is your page five?
Page five of your handouts? You were saying, you know, there were the fund balances by departments.
I think based on what I'm seeing, this kind of thing on the fund balances, we probably have an opportunity for about $4 million. We could put in the short terms and or midterms in treasury heads. But unfortunately, it's primarily gonna only impact two departments, street and water sewer. Water sewer is gonna be the, by far, the benefactor of the increased interest revenue, increased investment. General, probably at the, if it was a million, I would have taken a quarter million and invested it, at least it would have generated in the 2030 range. Right now, I still feel comfortable if the city sales and use tax grows at the rate it's growing and it stays high, we're probably, I'm probably gonna recommend you do at least a quarter out of general. Put it in, you know, we can always pull it back if we need to. Probably four, four and a half million.
So, every, is every department, the, the interest stays within that department? I mean, the, all the interest doesn't go back into just like the general fund?
Correct. And they, their money earned it, their money, it's, that would be establishing a contingency fund for water sewers, it would be establishing a contingency fund for the street, and it would be establishing a contingency fund for general. Pretty much those are your three main areas.
You know, I guess, you know, one thing I would say about that is, you know, Tom's, Tom's been harping on one side of this. We're passing this budget that says, okay, here you go, what if they really spent it all? You know, I mean, if we really spent it all, we just did what you just told us was gonna happen. We do it again next year, you know what I mean?
Right.
So, you know, I just proceed with caution and somehow, I mean, I don't know, because once we pass the budget, we've said, there you go, fellas, go, go spend the money, it's, we're giving it to you. Once you pass the budget, it's there, unless you're gonna come back somewhere.
Well, and again, like I said, you know, we look at this on a quarterly basis, like you were suggesting, you know, and, and kind of give it, and I think we have much more stats to look at, you know, and, and better guide the, the city's expenses.
Ken, I said some of the salary discussion a minute ago, what you brought up. What, what you did by passing that scale, I don't have it in front of me, three years ago, now, I think, is exactly what was, somebody said, is that you've given the directors the ability to, to raise the salary or hire in a sal, somebody at a salary within that scale. And, and that's, that's what, that's what that's for. And I understand the concern about salaries going up, but if you, if you don't want that to be the process, then you don't need to pass that scale. The scale, as I have said before, we are gonna start looking at very soon, because in my opinion, we, let me back, we don't do a COLA, but we have done a COLA in a few years. So, your, the ability for these department heads to give those raises is important because there is no COLA. Now, the discretion of, of what you're seeing of a 3%, a 6%, a 7%, a 16% is something that you okay by allowing this scale. And to, to say, and I'm not, I'm not, to go back and say there ought to be a process or there should be a, I forgot what term was used, well, if you wanna see it across the board, then they should not have a scale to work with them. If you only want it to be, everybody gets 2% or 3% or 4% or whatever it is, then you have to go, the next time this comes up, that's what you have to put in place. You've given the freedom to these department heads, and I, I'm not, I think you should have, I think it's a good, because they can't be department heads, in my opinion, I was one one time by just saying, no matter how good a job Bill's done, he's only gonna get 2%. And the guy that has not done a good job is gonna get 2% also. But that's kind of what I'm hearing that you wanna see, but that's not, that's not fair to any employee, in my opinion. So, that's just my, my take on that, in, in working with these folks every day, day in, day out. You can rehash, and that's fine, this is, this is the council's decision to make in a budget to pass or not to pass, but what's in place now, and you can revoke that, I think, at any time, you go back and undo things, obviously you have the ability to do that. But to, to ponder, if you will, on the fact that you're, somebody's getting 3%, somebody's getting 7%, that's kind of irrelevant.
You're not going against the law if you pass.
Exactly, I mean...
It's been placed.
This is not a fact...
I completely agree with you, I'm not disagreeing at all.
This is not a factory, whereas then everybody does the same job and should get paid the same amount. It's just, it's just not. You've got, I mean, nine departments, everybody does something different, and with all different pay scales, as you know, so it's just, I hate to see you worried about...
Well, I guess...
Dropping under a million dollars is a concern to me too, absolutely. But I think your point, I take your point very well, in the fact that early on and salaries don't get concerned, and when we get back to this revamping, and you're right, I think, I think you said a while ago, that sooner or later, what do you do when people top out? They top out, and that's it. Now, eventually, that top out will be moved out, because that's, everybody does, I mean, everybody's making, gonna make more money eventually, and that's, that's the way of the world. I mean, you, I don't know any company that goes reverse, well, they might, but, so, you just gotta...
You're, you're totally right, we completely passed that and said, this is it, that, you know, and I don't think anybody fakes it. My only thing that, the, the thing that, you know, if you look at this budget, budgeted compensation, it's, if Tom made us one of those charts like he made for the police department, the line's gonna look like this, you know? The trend, which is probably the trend in the whole world, right? I mean, everybody, I mean, that's kind of the way the world works. And so, it's just, when you look at the number and go, gee, wow, there went another $100,000.
Our, and I'm not saying to show that you guys have to think, our, our concern, our job is, is my job for sure, as mayor, and I know you're, I feel like your job as council is to, to work and get the, the other end of this thing up, to help make that go away a little bit, the revenues. And, you know, we can, we can talk for hours and hours on the salaries and issues, and it's, and it's debatable, it's a good conversation to have, but I think we ought to be focusing on more about how to get more money in. When you talk about things that need to change, that's what needs to change, the revenue agreement, and I'm not, you know, and that's a good sermon to have, that's a good soapbox topic on, but seriously, because you're right, I, this will just continue to go. There's no, you gotta, you gotta be aggressive in budgeting, you gotta make sure that you're on top of it. I think, I think your, your thought process will go, questioning these capital expenditures and these capital projects is very important.
I mean, I'm just looking at this from a bottom line, if revenues here, if expenditures keep doing this, something's gotta give. If we don't have the answer for what we're gonna do to tilt that revenue line, the prudent thing to do is hold that expense line as best you can hold it, until you feel like the revenues are gonna get going.
I agree with that.
And right now, we don't know what that is that's gonna tilt that revenue line, and so, we just gotta be...
And, but the bottom line is, where do, where do you, where do you draw the line to hold the city hostage? You know what I'm saying? You made a point a while ago, of, well, I don't think, okay, somebody's got $500,000 of capital expenditures, I'd like to think that our department heads, if we have enough faith in them, they're just gonna go out there and start going crazy. That's why they're department heads. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I know that money's there to spend, but if we don't spend it, it's not the end of the world.
Well, I mean... Yeah, to that point, and, and we're making some adjustments, the department heads are learning, and we've talked about this a couple of times in the head, department head meeting, certainly Tom raised it to our attention, there's ways of doing these, these capital expenditures. One, we're in the habit of just putting everything in there in one year and talking about spending. And we all know that that's not how that works. I think John brought it to our attention in the military the other night in a meeting, that you, your first year, you budget your, your engineering fees and all that, because it's gonna take you minutes. So if you put that in there, you start, you get that technique up, and then the next year, the next year, you start letting me do the real work part of it.
You can also do a percentage of...
Yeah, and in the meantime, this committee that he refers to, this, our, whatever we are, investment committee, starts looking at real time, what do we do with this money? Instead of just laying around, we can, we invest it and we try to make better of what we've had in the past, because we've never been in that place before than I have.
Well, and I think, you know, to, Tom has, Tom has said several times, talking about, we need a five-year plan, to your point about the capital expenditure. What's five-year plan? We don't really know what five-year plan is, you know, granularly or in the big picture here. If we know this, if we had this five-year plan from 50,000 feet and said, here's a five-year plan for revenue, here's a five-year plan for expenditures, salaries went up by $100,000, probably wouldn't anybody get much heart, or nobody'd know that. We're on the plane, you know? We don't have, we don't necessarily have that, that framework, you know, from year to year, like, we never had, I mean, that's not, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, we never had, I mean, we always, you know, chirped over year to year.
And by the way, a 3.5 is great, but, you know, I'm talking to water commission people and, and other people about a 20 and 30 year. I mean, I'm not gonna be here that long, obviously, but we're talking what happens in 40 or 50 years from now with, with water, with city drinking. And we've gotta, we gotta put something out there in place for somebody to, to go, hey, somebody was at least thinking ahead and get this stuff going.
What happens when that contract expires and things?
We're already, we're already having those discussions, absolutely. And so, I...
You get that credit. They, they're working on it, they, they have a five-year plan, and Street and I are working diligently almost every day during that. So the big contributors are already involved in preparing and getting started, and slowly but surely, we're getting on the same page of becoming a little more realistic in what is our capital outlay for a specific year.
So, I just wanna ask you, Tom, you've done all this work, great work, are you happy with this budget, where it's at?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a, I don't think those numbers are as due in doing this day or year. I know several projects still in the water sewer that I don't, I'm sure there's gonna be some additional carryover for 2021. It doesn't, my conversations with Ray, when do you plan on starting this project? Oh, I'd start it probably in the fall. I doubt very seriously if you're gonna be spending $1.2 million in, you know, four months on the project, at least not even engineered, you know, that type of thing. So I really anticipate that will be probably, our fund balance will deplete as much as the rest. But that end is what I'm trying to do with the department directors, and that is, be a little more realistic in your budget numbers, because when you put out there to the public that you're gonna, we're gonna spend, and even the mayor says, our budget right now has, you know, $3.5 million for capital expenditures, and it's broken out this way, and then we don't do it, it's a failed promise to the citizens. What we need to do is say, we've got a $5 million capital plan, of which million dollars of it's gonna be in these projects this year, and the rest spread out over the next two or three. So, I'm working that way with the department director.
You're giving this budget? I make a motion to adopt the 2020, yeah, 2020 budget.
Second. As a motion and a second to adopt the 2020 budget.
Before, is there a way we can, we got one correction to it that's not in there yet, that's not in that budget? Involves street, we can either do it now, or we can do it in the meeting on Monday as an amendment. I'd rather just get it in if it's possible. What we wanna do is, there is that generator that was put in, as I talked to you, about $35,000. They don't need that generator this year. What they really need, and none of you have heard this, because last year we had some concern over spraying for mosquitoes in the city. We tried to see if Fort Smith would come down and do that spraying, and right now they told us that they're, they're out of that business, they're not coming to do our, they won't, they won't entertain it. So, he's looked into, and he's looked into, and you have a cause?
Yes.
You wanna come up and tell them?
Remind me, go ahead.
The spray machines is gonna be around, well, it's gonna be at $10,150,88. Okay? Materials are non-restricted materials. There are gonna be 80, I mean, 8,7941. Now, that's for, that'll be 32 days of spraying, that much. And that doesn't mean every day we spray will be spread out through the mosquitoes to the season of 128 hours of spraying. That's a feedback, if you'd like, there's some sort of...
Well, I'm in my motion for the 2020 budget to put in the mosquito's prayer.
So, Dennis, what, what parts of the city are we calling down? I thought I was spraying the entire city. Issues of some...
All congested, from the hills. Over where you are. I'd like to put all the waters safe.
And if I may, I think, I think the process would be initially to go where people complain. I mean, we, we don't know where they are until they come and tell us, right? I mean, this, this is obviously a citizen's concern, not a citizen.
We've all had complaints.
Yes.
I would like to complain around my area.
It's kind of like anything else, it's like code enforcement, you know, we do our best to monitor the whole town, but if, if there's an issue in a low-lying area, which we have many, we are a city of creeks, as we know, then I think that's what is, how you would approach it, am I right?
Yes.
To begin with.
Is there anything in the streets that, I can, you know, these things, but I'm thinking there was a...
The health standing, health standing orders, the health...
There is, and we still, I think we, I don't know how often we take those, but...
I haven't looked into the materials, I haven't looked into the materials of spray.
We used to keep those in the water department, and when people would come in, like even a pool, abandoned pool or something, those were given out, and I think we can still do that.
I mean, I'd like to have some low, I mean, I guess myself, I would like to see any water, and it's been standing there for a long time, you know, I'd like to... Myself, I mean, it's police staffs that have it.
I think, I think you're still, I don't know, anybody's here for the board.
I used to get my, they had lots of them over there, when I would get a, you know, an abandoned house, and a swimming pool from the street park, there were lots of them over there. I don't know where they are now, but I got pretty good at throwing over them, swimming pool.
Okay, I'm in my motion, Charlotte, so you get this down, to take out the generator for streets and put in mosquito spraying setup, which there was 30 or 38,000 for the generator.
35.
35, and this is 18.
This is going to be, I'm going to request 20. So we're actually saving the $15,000 in the budget.
And then I want to clear up the deal on the rain schedule for the sirens. I know we've been beating it up, but I agree that they shouldn't exceed this.
So anything is over max in this budget?
Well, it can't be over max because we have a law here that says it can't, it has to be within between this. So it's, so if somebody's over max, that's, I mean, it's...
It's got to be lowered down at max.
Until, until that is revised, and the mayor, they're working on it. But I'm just saying...
Salaries stay within the max.
Right, well, that's, that's why we passed that, so...
Stay within the max.
Right, I mean, I'm just...
So remove the generator from street and insert the mosquito equipment? And then make sure that salaries stay within the max.
That's all, that's all.
I revise my second to the second.
Okay.
But I just think that's fair. I mean, we, we passed that, it's been in place for three or four years now, so, I mean, we ought to go with that until the mayor comes, and Tom comes up with something different that we can all agree on to make a go-hire. That's, that's the whole reason for doing that.
There was one in the past year.
Well, I mean, I didn't know there was any, but I'm just saying that they should be within the, within our...
Ron?
Yes.
Is there a meter?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Mike, sir?
Yes.
Anthony?
Thank you very much.
This is the only other I would entertain emotionally.
Very.
A second.
Thank you very much.